Officially open. First of all, may I do the pledge of allegiance, followed by one of silence for Oxford and also for Danny, who was a former school board member in the past recently. But Miss Thompson. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America, the Constitution stands on the nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up, roll call. Crystal Bieber? Here. Rebecca Chambles?
Here.
Mark Holcomb?
Here.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Deborah Hodd?
I'm present. I am on site, Long Beach, Mississippi, 3956 Carol.
Beth Scott?
I'm here. My home, Madison Heights, Michigan. My home.
And Gloria Thompson?
Here.
Read the form. Next up, public fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting, a period of time known as public comment inside a site, at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this form to discuss job-related topics. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone following these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. And did we get? We have none.
Can we go about the silence for Oxford before we do the public?
We did it.
Oh, I didn't. I took the DMS bit.
Yeah, we did it after. Sorry, we did it after our pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I didn't hear that, sorry.
Tom Smith?
Close stuff. I'm Tom Smith. This is my opinion. I want to congratulate the administration, the school board, and the voters who supported the successful bond on November the 2nd. By focusing on the district's needs instead of wants, you accomplished something that the previous administration boards failed to do. The voters responded with support. You didn't even need a public hearing. You showed voters that their money will be responsibly managed and spent, and kids will be looked after in well-maintained buildings. Way to go. The district deserves this win. Just one comment about bullying. I don't want to minimize anybody's experience. It can be very hard to be a victim of bullying. And some bullies don't stop bullying when they grow up. Nobody deserves this kind of treatment. If it's happening to you, get help from trusted adults. That's all I have. Thanks.
Next up is the superintendent report. Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to send our prayers and our thoughts for the families of Oxford Community Schools. I know such a tragedy, and our hearts and thoughts and prayers are sent to the whole family. We've already offered our support to the school district in whatever capacity is needed. I do want to give thanks to the families that have been actively engaged in recording of social media posts. We had a few that were being circulated, and the parents really got to the bottom of it and want to thank them. That being said, we do have some changes that are taking place starting tomorrow. Today, we went through all our emergency procedures and protocols from the beginning just to kind of have a refresher course. We went over Alice and Stop the Bleed with the whole district. We are going to have a police officer at the entryway of both Madison High School and Wilkinson Middle School from now until the end of, from now until Christmas break. Want to reinforce that backpacks are to be placed in the lockers. And I want to give a huge thank you to the Madison High School Police Department that have worked tirelessly with me this entire weekend, just trying to get to the bottom of things. We're going to have extra police patrolling our buildings, so you will see more police cars in the parking lot, and so that is by design. And we are going to be sending out a survey shortly to get input on some security features that we want to kind of get different perspective on. And that is all I have. Oh, I do want to ask parents just to go over your children's social media accounts, please. It is so crucial that we are actively involved in our kids' social media accounts. We uncovered one that was created fictitiously, but it created a lot of harm, and so we are asking parents to be proactive. And if you do hear something or see something, to email me directly. I'm working with Madison High Police Department. They're working with the FBI, so we'll get to the bottom of things rather quickly. We have been given the green light to open tomorrow by the Chief of Police, so we are opening tomorrow.
Okay. Next up, approval of minutes from the regular board meeting, November 1st, 2021. Need a maker and support, please. I'll make the motion. Trustee Bieber? I'll support. Trustee Chambles? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles? Yes. Crystal Bieber? Yes. Motion passes. Next up, approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance and delegating the sale of bonds. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and delegation, delegating the state, goodness gracious, sale of bonds, excuse me. Need a maker and support, please. Trustee Holcomb?
I'll support. Definitely.
Trustee, I support. Any discussion? Hearing none, there were two, two things I just wanted to add. The first, I clarified with Mr. Urban beforehand, it says we could or could not add item 21 into the resolution. He has suggested that we keep it in, that otherwise they couldn't represent us, so I wanted to make that clear, that there is an inclusion. And secondly, appendix A. Dr. Hill, if you just want to clarify that, because I had a question on that as well.
Yes. The question was, did we file our, it's called an MSRP, and it stands for Municipal Security Rulemaking Board. And then we, school districts also have to file these reports through EMA, the Electronic Municipal Market Access System. And it's required, and it's a continuing disclosure agreement, and we didn't file this agreement. What, what is filed with the agreement, you know, there's a actual disclosure document that's filed, and then, you know, we receive a submission confirmation, and PFM files this reporting on behalf of the district. I supply the information, and they file these reports on our behalf, and they have been filed, and all of the confirmations have been forwarded to you, to our Board of Ed President. And then also, I wanted to let the Board know that we also received qualified status from submitting our qualified statement for Madison District Public Schools, and I also provided that to our Board of Ed President.
Okay. And then the first one she was talking about is the appendix A. Just FYI, if anybody wants to go back and reference it, we do have, yeah, shown as being in peril. Okay. There have been no other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up, a close review and approval is a quote from Delta. Network services in the amount of $14,332.50 for wireless support license renewals needed to support the district's wireless infrastructure. As for 2.3, funding will be used to make these purchases. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the wireless support license renewals for the 22 school year. Need a maker and support, please. Trustee Thompson's making the motion. Trustee Holcomb's the support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up, approval of individual contract for the enrichment coordinator. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the individual employee contract as presented. Need a maker and support, please. Trustee Thompson?
I'll support.
Trustee Bieber?
Chambles, sorry.
Chambles. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Beth Scott?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Motion passes. First is the second reading of policy 0167.2, closed session. And we'll read it in full. The Board may, by means of a roll call vote, meet in closed session, one, close to the public for the felony purposes, A, to consider dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of, or to hear complaints of, or charges brought against, or to consider a periodic personal evaluation of a public officer, staff member, or individual agent. If the named person requests a closed hearing, a majority vote is required. To consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of a student only. If the student or student's parents request a closed hearing, a majority vote is required. Also see by law 0169, student disciplinary hearings. C, for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collectively bargained agreement, if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing, a majority vote is required. D, to consider the purchase of or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained, a two-thirds vote is required. To consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, but only if an open meeting would have been detrimental, would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the public body, a two-thirds vote is required. To consider materials such as written opinions of counsel, which are exempt from discussion by state or federal statute, a two-thirds vote is required. To review the specific contents of an application for employment or appointment if the candidate requests that the application remain confidential, a two-thirds vote is required. However, all interviews for employment or appointment of the superintendent shall be held in an open meeting on the Board. In keeping with the confidential nature of closed session, no member of the Board shall discuss the content of discussions that take place during such sessions. The only exception will be discussions with the district's legal counsel or is directed by an order of the court in proper jurisdiction. Additionally, due to the need for confidentiality and the increased vulnerability of internet communication systems to happen in other attacks, members of the Board must be present to participate in closed session, and a condemnation for disability-related assertions will be considered on a case-by-case basis. It is expected that the Board members shall not record nor communicate by any means, electronic or otherwise, with party or parties outside such meetings regarding the substance of such meetings, either during or after the course of each meeting. So, nothing's been read twice. We need to adopt the policy update of 10167.2. So I need a maker and a second.
Madam President, I make that motion.
Trustee, I, who needs support?
I'll support.
Trustee Holcomb? Is there discussion? President Holder? Trustee Chambles, go ahead.
So we've been, well, the Board's been on Zoom for going on, I believe, close to 18 months. It could be slightly off, and I think it's close to that. And this has just come up in the past month, month and a half. And it's concerning that it's coming up when we have a sitting trustee who is out for medical reasons, whose doctor didn't write a note that she needed to be out, but instead it's met with pushing for details, which is HIPAA. And the physician who's overseeing her care says she should not be there, that should be good enough. But being completely transparent, the way this appears is that it's to stop from the superintendent's evaluation and block the trustee who may not have favorable opinion. And I found that disturbing.
Any other comments? I guess I will just say anything can be twisted to look like what they want it to be. Doesn't have to be the actual. So with that, roll call vote, please. Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
No.
Crystal Bieber?
No.
Motion passes. Next up, personnel report. New hires, Benjamin Watts, enrichment coordinator, Pamela Moner, lunch monitor at Madison Elementary, Peggy Shaloon, cafeteria worker at Madison High School. It is recommended the Board of Education accept the personnel report for the Madison District Public Schools as presented. Need a maker and support, please. I'll make the motion. Trustee Bieber?
I'll support.
Trustee Holcomb? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up, check register. Expenditures for the month of November, accounts payable, $496,872.38 payable, $4,9412.76 wire transfers, $404,052.47 for a total out $1,310,337.61. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the monthly expenditures. Need a maker and support, please. Trustee Scott? Oh, my goodness, Thompson, sorry. And support?
I'll support, Madam President.
Okay, well, well, that. How about trustee at? And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Deborah Hodd?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
No.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up, committee reports, GRC report.
Sorry, no, we do not have an update.
Okay. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Parks and Rec?
I was actually there, but I don't get my thoughts together. I had some stuff going on. Saw a report next time.
All right. Um, yes, sir, Mr. Holcomb?
Can I report on the call?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We met with Deputy Chief of Madison Heights here, Lieutenant from Oldham County Sheriff's, and Lady Lauren, I believe her name was, Gloria, Debbie and I, we met with them, and they really liked the idea of teaming up with the district to, on the letter here, it also says they want to citywide, let the district, it offers everything, they want Angel, if you could, send out a thing to the parents, just to look at the website, the sheriff, the call program, and see if, would the parents pick up five things that they offered to bring to our district, and then we'll figure out the five who we want to start with, and kind of put it through a board here and work.
Ms. Van Holster?
Yep.
Moving on to board comments. I'm going to start with Beth Scott, so I don't forget you. Go ahead, Beth.
I just wanted to say healing prayers for Oxford, for their students, staff, and community, and also a reminder to our students, staff, and community, please reach out to the district if you're in need of counseling or assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee at, you're on next.
I'm sorry, everyone, I have any need to report tonight, just thank everybody that came, and my prayers to the Oxford family, and that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Chambles, go ahead.
Sorry, we got tangled. Um, first, I just want to thank everybody for coming out or watching from home. We are all aware of the recent tragedy in Oxford and everyone there and my family's thoughts and prayers. Although it came from a horrible event, this has opened the doors for much heated discussions, and hopefully we pulled from it something to prevent another event. Thank you to all the MTPS staff for working so hard this week to plan, learn, and push for a safer school district. Thank you to Mr. Whitman for all the great things coming to Wilkinson. I hear amazing news about the Boys to Men group, and I am so proud my oldest son has some strong adults playing such a positive role in these young men's lives. Lastly, to all the staff and kids returning tomorrow, be strong, be diligent, watch your surroundings, and remember, no one is alone. If you need help, reach out, and every single one of you matter. Have a good night.
Thank you. Trustee Bieber?
I also just wanted to offer my thoughts and prayers to the entire Oxford community, to parents and staff everywhere around the world that is heavy-hearted. I sympathize with you. My prayers and love is with you all. Thank you.
Trustee Holcomb?
Yeah, I feel the same way, there about Oxford, thoughts and prayers, all of them. I have family members that live out there along with us, but anyway, it's a nice community. It's a shame something like that had to happen. But anyway, thoughts and prayers to all of us.
Trustee Thompson? Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I'd want to do thoughts and prayers out to the whole Oxford community. I'd also like to say I really support the Pell program. It gives our children another outlet to express if they're angry or they need to express, you know, how, do it in sports, do it in wrestling, do it in something else. Get your, what's the word I'm looking for? Get your anger out that way and not with weapons. I think the Pell program would be a wonderful addition to our school. Do you want to cut you off? I have just a couple of things. First of all, yes, I think we absolutely need to get input from parents, the staff, the kids, even what, safety, equipment, devices, whatever.
the kids, if any, what, safety, equipment, devices, whatever, that they feel we might or might not need. I guess my, my concern is whatever we invest in, we keep up with. I've heard from a lot of students, we have XYZ at the doors, and they're never turned on. Or, you know, we had a gentleman sitting at the door, and he's no longer there. So whatever we decide to do, I'm fully on board with. I'm just saying, let's make this long-term, not a short-term goal. Glad to see that we have an enrichment coordinator. The one thing that I will suggest that I've always kind of been in a pain in the knockup bout is, my husband does, and everybody knows, was a teacher and a, a good Lord coach. Really having it tonight. At the end of every season, before they got paid, they had a list, their equipment list had to be in, and orders for next year had to be in. So we got them at discount prices this year, and we knew we would have what we needed beginning of next year. So that's my suggestion to share. With that, I would just like to say, we have a couple holidays coming up, that will not, we have one meeting Friday, it will not be open to the public, it will be opening and going into closed session, and then closing as soon as we come out, just so everyone is aware. And happy holidays to anybody who doesn't see us between now and January. With that, I can point out, good evening. Meeting adjourned.
How many does that close the computer?
7:32.
Thank you.
Do they need, do they do roll call?
Oh, my goodness. I really am just dumbing down today. I apologize. Roll call vote. Maker and support.
I support.
I'm so sorry, guys. Holcomb and Thompson.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes, she, she.
Okay, Beth Scott?
Yes.
And Gloria Thompson?
Yes. My apologies, yeah, sorry. Thank you.